For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting on April 1st, 2013. Call the roll, please.
Iler.
Here.
Nielsen.
Here.
Noah.
Here.
Sexton.
Here.
Walagora.
Here. Stand for the pledge.
Let me give it to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone had an opportunity to read the minutes? They're all set. Any modifications to the agenda? Citizens appearing before council on non-agenda and agenda items are allowed five minutes each. This is the only time during a city council meeting that citizens are allowed to speak to council. If you do, sir, please come to the podium and give us your name and address for our records, please.
Okay, my name is Ray Aubrey, and I own a ton of Sonosized Laundry Mats. And I'm a little bit concerned about what's your consulting firm and some of the things that I've read in Alpena news. I know that next meeting is going to be a real... Give you a... Working on that, but it's something I wanted to say here before you get to really think about it too much. We know for years now that the infrastructure on our water, our plumbing, is in pretty bad shape. We've known for years about the wood water mains made of oak. And realize, everybody realizes that it's a situation. I have a situation if we raise the water rates to what they recommended in the paper, I use almost a million gallons a year. This would put me right out of business at the rate that they want. I operate on a very slim margin. Most people don't realize that, but laundromats don't make a lot of money. And so anyway, here's an example. At .55... 5.56 for the combined water sewer. I just had a $2,000 bill come today for yesterday in the mail, and that would be about $4,600 under the... What they suggested on that option one. And in summertime, I have about a $2,500 bill, dollar bill, now, every three months, and that would bring mine to $5,700. Every three months, that's a lot of money to come up with. And I hope we all understand that. It doesn't come easy. So anyway, that's the biggest thing. I know there's a lot of senior citizens that are running on, live on fixed income, check to check every month. That's all they'd have to live on. Some people have nice retirement, but some people don't. So anyway, I thought about this, and I don't know if there's any way that there's, you know, there's been money for the boat harbor, there's been money for everything, but all this plumbing has been needed to be fixed for a long time. We keep kicking the can down the road. At some point, you gotta quit kicking it. But we can't do it all overnight. It has to be done in increments. I know that there's a lot of people that this may become a problem for them. Yeah, I guess that's all I have to say, but I just want you to know, go easy on us.
All right. I appreciate that.
Be a cool city, but step up for the people.
For sure. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Any announcements this evening?
No.
The consent agenda is bills to be allowed, and B is a renewal of auditing service for Straley Hillsley Lamp PC July 1st, 2013 until June 30th, 2014.
I move we adopt this consent agenda as presented.
Go, please.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Iler?
Yes.
I have a proclamation this evening. Whereas adults who provide alcohol to those below the legal drinking age of 21 are placing those youth at risk for health, safety, and legal problems. And whereas alcohol kills 6.5 times more young people than all other illicit drugs combined, and usage among teens often accompanies traffic fatalities, suicides, unprotected sex, drug use, and other high-risk behaviors and illegal activity. And whereas alcohol use by young people is dangerous, not only because of the risk associated with acute impairment, but also because of the threat to their long-term development and well-being. And whereas Michigan ranked 16th in the percentage of alcohol consumed by underage youth, with one being the highest, it is estimated that underage alcohol use costs the citizens of Michigan $2.1 billion. And whereas 100% of any alcohol consumed by a minor came from an adult, it is illegal for adults to knowingly allow their child's friends to drink alcohol in their home, even with the permission of the friend's parent. Now, therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim April 2013 as Social Host Awareness Month in the City of Alpena, and call upon all parents, citizens, homeowners, and property owners to host gatherings responsibly and take measures to eliminate excess of alcohol to person... access of alcohol to persons under the age of 21. Signed on this day by myself. And Donna, are you Donna?
Your side.
Marty?
Oh, I have to come over there. Okay, better photo op.
It's good, Donna.
Yeah. I don't think we make enough money for all of this.
Hold on a minute.
All right.
I see that, Sean.
That's why I'm way over here.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, your report of officers, treasurer's financial report, July 1st, 2013 to February 28th, 2013.
Our prorated budget should be at about 66% through February of this year. Overall, our general revenue is at 83.63%, and there are a few areas, though, where it is a little bit low. Our investment income is just not improving like we had hoped. Rates are not going up. Rental inspection revenue is low for right now. It's about 43%, but that'll pick up, according to Michael Lucheski. Our rental rehab grant has not come in. That was $105,000. And ambulance service charges are slightly lower than the prorated amount by about $20,000. And obviously, firework donations are only at 25%, but those will pick up in a couple months. Some of our things are seasonal, our revenue and our expenses, so it doesn't show up for a while. On the expense side, we're at 65.43% of budget, which is about 1% below where we should be. A big hit that we took was our insurance and workers' comp rates went very high, and that hit all of our departments. Even though we're doing well in our expenses by being under, there were just a few hits like that. Our loans, some of our loans, if they've hit already, it's 100% expensed, so it makes the prorated amount look higher than it is. Overall, we are moving along with this year's budget, and we're almost going to meet this Wednesday. Department heads to go over next year's budget. Are there any questions?
No. Couple like that, you answered, so.
Okay, good.
Got a couple quick ones. You talked about the rental rehab grants, and were we awarded that and just haven't...
Oh, yes, every year it's late.
Well, that's all dependent upon when the projects occur. We've had one grant that there's been no activity for about a year. A lot of that's, one, because we requested an amendment for additional funding and extension, but they've changed the rules in the middle of the game, and that's caused some considerable delays. But now, we do have a number of projects that are moving forward on it. And our other grant, we got basically all of the money committed, so it will be done during this construction year and finished up next fiscal year, both of those grants. They are moving forward now.
Is there another question?
Okay. Can we receive a file?
Receiving file.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Iler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, Rich is here with two bids. Septic waste transfer pump and city concrete program.
On February 26th, the city received an open bid for purchase of a septic transfer pump for use at the water recycling plant. Bid advertisements presented various suppliers and bid documents were posted in the City of Alpena's website, with six bids received from the attached ASRED bid results. Typically, on these types of bids where we're buying equipment for the water plant or the water recycling plant, we package up the information you see, the pump specs, et cetera, and forward those over to the utility for their review. In this case, we sent them over to Bob Hill at the water recycling plant superintendent. He sat down with Mark Novakowski, the maintenance person over there, and they went through the bids, and it was about a month, if you look at his memo coming back to us. It took about a month to review those, go through them thoroughly. And based on Bob's... Bob Hill's review and recommendations, my recommendation is city engineer to purchase the pump from Pesco out of Warren, Michigan, an amount of $16,334. Funds for this purchase are included in sewer fund line item, $30,000 budgeted. Now, $16,000 with United Water will also incur some costs when they go to assemble, install it, and pipe it, plummet. So there is going to be some additional cost, but we're going to end up well under that $30,000 budget.
Rich, I notice Cur was almost $1,200 below Pesco.
Yes.
Is that covered by one of those three bullet points in the letters?
Yeah. Some of them were the, they said, the centrifugal type pump, which were not in the best interest. Some were based on the, basically, the plumbing size that it takes to put it in there where it's at would involve significantly more plumbing. This one, the style of pump that we're recommending will fit right in there, very easy to plumb, and it has a reputation for performing the service that we do. And that's the problem, you get, you know, these suppliers think, oh, my pump will do that. Well, maybe, but not. It's not really what we want. We want to make sure that we spend $16,000 for a pump that's going to function where we want it to.
Need action on that? Do you... Okay.
I move approval of the bid by Pesco. Need the amount?
No, I got it.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Iler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
City concrete program. On March 19th, the city opened and received an open bid for the annual city sidewalk program. And this is the voluntary program where property owners, if they have sufficient sidewalk, can sign up with the city, or if they have their shoreline placed out from their house out to the street, and they tear off sidewalk, they can sign up to get it done through this program. We do, we bid this out every two years. We have a one-year renewal option in this. And we did receive three bids. Bedrock Contracting, $45,669.30. Ryan Brothers Construction, $47,878.90. And Zand Brothers, $52,172.50. Because all bidders were outside the city limits, but inside Alpena County, the local bidder's preference does not apply. After reviewing the proposed prices, it is my recommendation to city engineer that we award the city concrete program contract to Bedrock Contracting for the 2013 construction season at the unit prices outlined on the attached bid stipulation. This contract has a one... Option of one-year renewal. The resident cost per sidewalk, what we charge the property owners, is based, is established in 60% of the cost for installation of four-inch replacement sidewalk. This cost will include both the contractor cost of 305 per square foot and approximately 35 cents per square foot. That is basically our engineering cost, time, billing costs, et cetera, per square foot, totaling $3.40. 60% of this cost will be 204. It is my recommendation to city engineer that the property owner sidewalk rate be established at $2.04 per square foot. This represents an 18 cent decrease below the 2012 rate of $2.22 per square foot.
The only thing I... That I noticed that I remember from two years ago was that there was, it was like a huge breakdown with all the, with all the bidders that get, and they, you know, it said, it was actually more than I probably would have wanted to know had I been sitting here. But it, it broke everything down, and there was a bit of an explanation as to, at that time, one of the bidders was higher, and there was an explanation that part of their bid was something that we wouldn't really use throughout a normal year. And I'm just assumed that when I saw this, that that was all taken care of and done.
We do an actual bid tab on it, so we break down, and all three of them are compared side by side.
Okay.
And, you know, everybody was in line on this one. I mean, they vary a few pins back and forth, but everybody was in line, but Bedrock was consistently below everybody else.
Enough on each item to obviously add up to the, whatever it is, $7,000 difference or amount. It's not that... Is the sidewalk program, is not strictly all voluntary, or is there a section of the city that we are actually targeting that definitely needs to be prepared and such?
No, the sub precinct sidewalk program, which was the targeted program, has not been in place for a number of years. It's basically funding. We do not give the resources to be able to take on a $175,000 or a $200,000 program to do that sub precinct sidewalk program. So it's basically city council on the passport, and I need this for the future. And this is strictly the voluntary program.
Do you... Do you need action on both the company's bid and the cost for sidewalks separately?
Because city council establishes, then it goes into our PSC.
Okay.
The first time in eight years, something's decreased. Not much, but it's nice.
All right. Yeah, we're ready for a motion on, we'll do the, I guess we'll do the sidewalk concrete program. And you're recommending?
Bedrock Contracting.
Bedrock Contracting, we'll do that first.
I move we award the contractor Bedrock Contracting at $45,669.30.
Walagora?
Hi.
Iler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
And then the rate per, I don't know how you want to put that. Per square foot for, for property owners?
Yes. It's the property owner sidewalk program.
$2.04.
I move we establish the property sidewalk replacement program at $2.04. And that's it.
That's good.
Do that. 18 cents less than last year.
Iler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Thank you, Rich. Unfinished business, an update on city council meetings on the internet. Steve Schulz.
At the February 18th, 2013 council meeting, city council gave direction to staff to post the recorded meetings of the February 18th, March 4th, and March 18th to YouTube in order to test the volume of viewers that might participate on the internet. In your memo, you have the numbers as of March 27th, and I actually have, I went right before the meeting and checked them again, and there's, there's an increase. The February 18th meeting was 195, so we had one more there. March 4th is 77, so that was one more there. Well, we actually had 22 more people for the March 18th one, which was the latest council meeting. So that went from 60 to 82 cents last Wednesday. So that's just something to consider, and if, you know, this, this becomes more popular because, you know, if we say, yes, we're definitely going to do this, and it becomes more popular, I, generally, I would see these numbers increase, I would think, just because of the fact that we, we make it known that, yes, we definitely are going to do this all the time, and if people start to depend on it on a regular basis. But, you know, we discussed previously that the additional cost for posting it would be 25 dollars per meeting, because we have to do extra things with the file in order for her to send it, send it my way, and for us to post it. But it appears people are interested in viewing it, and the viewership may grow through word of mouth from, you know, just those viewers, and also just through the city when we develop our YouTube channel and advertise it more frequently. I personally, I think that the additional $600 per year is offset by the additional population that we can reach via the internet. And I request that city council break staff to create our City of Alpena YouTube channel for the purposes of hosting council meetings and continue to monitor the usage and any comments as necessary. We will report back within one year detailing the usage. So by next April, we will give you, you know, the 12-month rundown of the viewership of the meetings and see how it's going.
Excellent.
As a vital avenue, I think, to continue getting out, getting out to the population.
I guess my only apprehension that would be that we would, that we would move to do that now and then go into budgeting a month from now and determine that, that it's not affordable. Do you have a feel for whether $600 is going to be a crunch of any kind?
Well, you know, $600 itself won't break us, but all the $600, and it's just more of a priority on what council wants. So we'll go through this during budget of all the different things that we spend money on, and have you look through them and decide if, like YouTube, is that a priority?
We can certainly undo it.
Yeah, we can undo anything, so, and I would certainly support the program. I think it's been pretty good, so I'm okay with that, as long as we understand that there's a chance it might be undone.
Steve, would you, I mean, would we want to wait to develop it ourselves until we know?
I guess that's the question. Do we want to, you know, maybe something we even develop now, carry through, and if we do get, you know, maybe that support, then for adding it to the next budget? Or, you know, I have a feeling there's people that are, that could be waiting on this and going, you know, yeah, once they go, that's gonna be nice, because we'll be able to view them all the time. I don't know if we stop now and then start it up again in July, if that might be a little bit of hiccup to the, to that viewership who might be looking at that.
Yeah, I don't want to, I wouldn't want to have any interruption, unnecessary interruption. What's, explain to me, I guess, the difference between what you're doing right now and what you would do if we, if we approved to have it throughout a year?
Well, the thing is now is...
The channel?
The way it's, we would create the channel. Right now, we're, we're posting to Penny's channel, and as a, as a non-governmental unit, it's my understanding that you can't have a bunch of space on that channel. They won't, they won't keep all these large videos on there for you constantly. Now, as a government entity, I'm, my understanding is that we can, we have a larger threshold for that, and we can have those meetings, we can have, you know, six or seven meetings in the archive and not worry about going over a limit of some sort.
Okay.
That's, I just don't want to, I don't want to fill up her space with that, because she has her videos too that she posts up there.
Right. Will you be able to, once we have a channel, will you be able to draw these ones that we've already done into ours and not hers?
Yes, yeah.
You might have said that, I'm sorry.
It'll, it'll reset the viewers, they'll view me through a different person, but yeah, I will, I'll get those videos from her as well.
Okay.
Where the world's headed, more technical than expected, so I appreciate you catching us up a little bit with that.
Makes it a little bit more user-friendly, too. You can watch the meeting at your convenience. I mean, I've linked to it on Facebook page, and had messages sent back to me that they appreciate the link, so I know people are actually looking at it through my page as well, so. Yeah. I would be fine. I would support just do, just go ahead and do it, and then, I don't, I don't see that $600 is, we won't be able to find that somewhere for something that's important like this. Suppose we could have that discussion again later, but somebody wants to go ahead now.
I'll move that we allow staff to create YouTube channel to display the city council meeting.
Were you first?
It was close, I mean...
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Iler?
No.
Thank you, Steve. New business. Which is back, bag, lawn, and leaf material pickup contract amendment?
Over the past probably three or four years, the city has done two big material pickups through contracted service. The past few years have been with Phillips Xpert Tree Service. That contract expired November 30th of 2012. We've been in contact with them. They have expressed an interest to continue that out, and have given us three more years' worth of pricing to continue providing that service. In discussing this with the city manager and in the budget process, one of the things that we felt may be warranted in this program is the potential to try to add one additional pickup to, in the summer. But unfortunately, we can't, we're not going to be able to make that decision until we go further into the budget process and see if we have the funding to be able to do that. But in order to give them some kind of a surety that we are going to do a spring, spring pickup, what I'm requesting is that council would authorize a contract modification, which would basically extend that contract out so that the spring pickup could be scheduled with them, and that way they can get their crews for any lined up. And then, once we get through the budget process, we would come back, revisit it with city council to either continue with two pickups a year or potentially try to increase it if so desired. It's, and for councils, it's about $10,000 a pickup. They do one in, in the spring and late in the fall, and it's, it's around $20,000 a year. We added a third one, and we could look at basically the same price to do that. So at this time, I'm recommending that we execute the attached contract amendment, modify the contract expiration date from November 30th, 2012, to May 31st, should be 2013, not 2012, as it says in the memo.
The amended contract is right. It says 2013 on that.
Yeah, it's just in the memo.
Oh, it's in the memo, okay.
Rich, are we dedicating a staff person to DPW when we get brush come in? I mean, how much, how much time are we spending over at DPW with the brush?
Well, it brings up a good point, and we're, you're going to see a memo here later this spring regarding the brush pickup and drop off. To put it politely, we've been absolutely slammed over at the public works with brush being dropped off. A lot of commercial entities are hauling their brush yet. These commercial landscaping companies, lawn maintenance companies are bringing in trailer after trailer after trailer. And it can't all be coming from the city, otherwise the city would not have a tree shrub or bush left, I don't think, by a certain degree again. So we're, we're going to make a recommendation that we discontinue brush drop off at the DPW and go back to curbside pickup or the brush only. We would still allow bag material dropped off, but the brush is, is just, we spend three to four hours a day with anywhere from two to four people out there chipping brush. That's how much brush we get in a day. Even if, if we prohibit the brush pickup, the brush drop off, go back to the curbside pickup, we've got a little more equipment cost, but... pickup, we've got a little more equipment cost, but we've got a crew, actually two crews out there for a week, and they're, and they handle the brush. And then, again, we would look at doing it, maybe not every month, but spring, maybe two in the, two in the spring, one in the summer, two in the fall, maybe something like that. And that, quite frankly, I think we're going to come out hours ahead with our crew time and equipment time.
Well, that's what I was going to ask you, before this comes up, can you give us a guesstimate on the cost, because I know a lot of it might be overtime or pulling people from one job, you know, a guesstimate on the cost, see if it's least comparable to the curbside. You know, I don't want to do both. I want to pay the curbside and pay the, to have DPW work out.
And that's, that's the thing is, we can't, it's, right now, typically after lunch, we divert one, you know, one or two crews out there, available staff, and that, those are things they could be doing in other locations. Uh, we're diverting those out to just take care of the brush, and if we don't do it for two or three days, it's just about a full day of chipping brush out there. And it's, it's very time consuming, and it's prohibitive of us getting our other work done. So that is one of the things, and we could certainly look at those costs, and we can come up with a, an average of what, of the amount of time we spend out there per, per day, for real.
You feel like the main issue is that people are taking advantage of our good nature, so to speak? You know, I think it would be more cost feasible if it was really just city residents and not something other?
I, we know, we know for a fact that there is, um, a lot of brush coming from outside the city. Um, you know, you, you confront the contractor the third day that he's pulled in with a trailer full of brush, and oh no, I'm getting that from over here. And, I, you know, I, I don't, it's not good customer service for us to get into those type of, of debates, and quite frankly, the co, you know, the contractors are getting paid to cut the brush on the, on the property owner's property and dispose of it. It's easy and cost-effective for them to basically dump it at the city yard. They don't have to deal with it, they don't have to chip it, they don't have to dispose it in any other way. So it, it's, we're really subsidizing the, uh, commercial contractors.
What happens to the chips after you chip them?
Typically, they're blown into the piles, into the mulch piles, and they're turned into compost, and they, they break down, it's probably two years, but two to three years by the time they break down, but they do break down into our compost program.
So where'd you want to tell me they came back and got the chips?
Well, and that's, the, we've actually looked at whether it's, if we could feasibly get a chip van in there, blow them into the back of the chip van, then like haul them over to Hillman Tower for them to burn, uh, something again, and we are still exploring that option.
Or they could come and get it.
Well, they, we were lucky and see if, if somebody would be willing to park a trailer there for us to use, chip it full, and then they can haul it over there and sell it, you know, in exchange for the rental of their chip truck.
How well do you do on that compost? Is it that, it's not that big a turnover?
It's not, it's, it's a money, it's a money loser for us. I mean, quite frankly, by the time we turn it and work with it and that, it, it's not a cost-effective program, it's very cost prohibitive for us, um, but it is something that we are, we have committed to in the past. And that's something we can reevaluate. The problem then becomes, what do we do with all this bagged material or the, the, the trees that we chip or the brush that we chip? You know, part of our, part of our problem too, is the growing compost piles or the number of trees that we've taken down. We, we took down almost 200 trees, all the, all the branches, all the tops get chipped, and that gets added into the compost program.
Good combo.
Sam?
Rich, are we taking in enough volume of, of, uh, brush to, in terms of pay fee for service, this is a potential revenue stream?
That would be a major change, I, I guess, if we were going to charge property owners.
Well, I was thinking of the big contractor jobs.
The, the problem is we've got to have somebody sitting out there eight hours a day, basically, uh, waiting for somebody to pull in and then charging them to chip it, and you've got the, the billing, the handling, and all that stuff, so it's, I mean, could it be? Uh, it certainly could be, but I don't know that we would offset our expenses.
It's a, uh, it's a thought, I guess, if you, um, maybe contract some summer help or something, I guess, look into it just to see, I don't know how you would price something like that or what have you, for a volume, or you don't want to charge me, would I, like, take down a single tree, but if there's some huge volume, I don't mean me, but just anybody that's seen-
That's what it sounded like.
I don't mean me, I just mean like the average, me personally, but just the average person that cuts a tree down or does some trimming, but, uh, if you've got contractors that are coming in at large volume, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's part of the, the customer, you know, the citizens of Alpena expect services, and that's one of the services that we need to provide in other communities going. So it is a bonus, it is a benefit, uh, to have that, you know, curbside pickup, et cetera, available. And we've talked about this before, some other communities that I've been associated with, um, used to charge the property, they didn't have the curbside pickup, but they would, basically, you paid down the city to come and chip your brush for you, and it was not a cheap process. But, you know, that's not something I'm recommending here, because we, this is a service that we have and provide to citizens.
What about if some nonprofits would want to man the gate, baseball teams, boys and girls club, Humane Society, and do it for a donation of $25 a truckload or something? Is that still too much paperwork?
I don't know, we, those are things, those are all things that we can explore. The easiest, you know, and I, I say the easiest for, for DPW staff is to basically prohibit the brush drop-off. You know, what I said, we stole off, and I'm going to pick on you, Sam, you show up there with two bags of leaves and you've got three branches that you picked up out of your yard. That, I mean, that, that's not the stuff, but it's, it's the high volume, the pickup truckloads, the trailer loads, that we, that we have to handle and, and chip are the ones that are really just killing us timelines.
Thanks.
Okay. So back to your, back to your reason for being here, I'm sorry.
It is, I mean, it's, that has been a very big topic.
Yeah, it's a good topic. Bring back, uh, any ideas that you come up with, obviously you're going to be back in the spring with a proposal of some, of some sort, so, uh, as far as amending the contract, um, basically just for a couple of months so they can do a spring pickup?
Yes.
Any discussion on that? Approve that, then?
I, uh, I can, uh, I moved that we, uh, extend the contract for, I'm sorry, is it Phillips Expert Tree and Landscape through May of, May 31st of 2013?
Yes.
Simon?
When you're ready?
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Sure.
Walagura?
Hi.
Tyler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Coastal Zone Management Grant Application Resolution of Support.
And, uh, I would like to apologize to council, on your chair in front of your seat tonight for three revised sheets that, uh, after the grant application was submitted, we were on a tight timeline last week to get them, we did identify, uh, some numeric wires that basically carried through on three separate sheets. So, uh, these have been corrected, you've given, you've been given a revised copy, and this has also been submitted to Coastal Zone Management folks, and, uh, I got an email back from a gentleman I sent it to, and he has already forwarded it on to an appropriate person for review. This is a project that came about, uh, earlier in the, in the spring. We were approached by Jeff Gray and Russ Green from Noah, that Mike Kijorski had approached them about doing some shoreline improvements behind the Noah facility to promote improved access and educational opportunities for, uh, the students that were at Noah. They, they do a lot of water quality testing and different activities, and it's very difficult for them to do that, to have good access to the river. So that was, that was one of the concerns, and when they talked with Mike Kijorski, he indicated that he was willing, a matter of fact, I think he was on his way to get his excavator at that point in time, and, you're going, and, uh, Russ approached, Russ and Jeff, uh, Russ Green and Jeff Gray approached us about it. He basically asked him to, you know, put him on hold, let's see if we can utilize those volunteer dollars, volunteer time, to leverage some additional dollars, uh, through the Coastal Zone Management Program. They thought it was a great idea, and, um, we worked with them, but unfortunately, it was a pretty short timeline by the time we got, uh, that ironed out with the folks for drop-off. Basically, what we're looking at is to develop, um, a tiered, um, set of retaining walls down that bank with a meandering pathway back and forth, so we can have barrier-free accessibility down to, down to the river's edge, some type of a dock, either a floating dock or a fixed dock at the shoreline, uh, and then also potentially installing a canoe kayak launch similar to what was installed at Dock Park. We also met with the youth sailing group, they were in full support of it, they would like to move their operations over there, so they have a, a permanent base, uh, for their facilities, and with that, we included some paved, uh, drive approaches down to that lower level. That way, they could back their trailers down, back their, the trailers with the sailboats, and basically park a small trailer down there that they use to store their sails and different equipment. And along with that, um, we looked at a implementation of a, of a pavilion, and, uh, nothing of the nature at Starlight Beach, basically a 24 by 44, uh, prefabricated pavilion. And we, we, we would put up, so it could be multi-use, even in climate weather, uh, Noah could take the students under there, do some educational opportunities outside, or if it's hot, get them out of the sun in there, and then the other, um, opportunity would be for our folks waiting aboard for glass bottom boat tours, that they would have a place where they can stand. We went through, went through the process, and Steve Schultz worked with me to develop the drawings, the concepts, and this is, this is conceptual drawing. I guarantee you the final product's going to be a little different, but this, this is basically a concept of what we want to do. The total cost that we're looking at for this project is estimated at $210,000. We're requesting the maximum weekend Coastal Zone Management Grant Program of $100,000, and we would be matching that with 100% in-kind services, like, uh, like Kijorski and his crew with their, uh, time and labor and equipment, and then also engineering and project development, project oversight, et cetera. So that basically would be $100,000 for them, $109,950, it's just under, under $210,000. Most of that local match money would be in the form of, um, the services provided by Mike Kijorski. The city's portion would be about $17,700 that we would be contributing in our time and services. If city council supports the submission of this grant application, um, the revised resolution will need to be approved, and once that's approved and executed, we will submit that to the Coastal Zone Management folks, and, uh, they, they're aware that, uh, this will be brought out.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, to get a 100% match and it only $17,000 from the city is wonderful. I know we used to host, at the Boys and Girls Club, we used to host the Sailing Club, it's, those kids have been kicked all around the river, they, they can't seem to find a home, and this just looks like a great idea for them and a great idea for any tourist who might come and be interested in what's going on down around the river on that side of the river. I think it's great.
Yeah, our riverfront's got a lot of potential, you know, it's, it's one of the most undeveloped areas of our community, so anytime we can make improvement and just pay in-kind services, that's, that's awesome, so I appreciate you staying on top of that.
Do we do, do we do anything with that, um, the fellow that was here with that other grant that was for the river? He had river frontage proposals.
Oh, Dave Derges?
No, no, he was a guy-
You mean, you mean Rick Dole from NIMCO, that's a, that, that riverscape plan?
Yeah, does it, does this-
This dovetails in with that.
Anything that, okay, 'cause he had, I went to one meeting, there was some discussion about doing different things with the river.
Fact, I think in your boxes, an invite to the next meeting.
Yeah, we're looking at, uh, the 11th of April for the next meeting, be held here in council chambers.
Okay.
And they'll be, basically be presenting an update of what we, we found, but yes, this, this does dovetail in here, and this is, these are the types of elements that we were looking at to implement along the shoreline, not just here, but all up and down, and, and
Right.
Getting over to another subject, but that's going to be kind of an advisory document of the different approaches that we need to take, that are in compliance with the new DEQ, DNR standards.
Okay, yeah, and I, I didn't want to get you off on something totally different like we did the last time, but that's okay, I just wanted to see, because of the two or three different things that are going on at the same time, as long as everybody's talking and somebody's not going to be shocked or-
I want to say, that, that's the real beauty is that the, the project we took out with the riverscape was exactly to identify these types of things. This just happened to come along a little, probably a year sooner than we envisioned.
Yeah.
We wanted to get that completed before we did this, but it is, it is incorporated into that overall concept.
Okay, I think it's great.
Rach, I'm sure this is something to look into, but is there going to be a runoff issue there? Is that, what you're talking about is kind of where it slows down, right?
Yeah, what, what we're setting up is a lot of that, um, is going to be, um, for like, it's a 6A stone, it's a very porous, uniform grade in stone larger. Once you, once you place it and pack it, it's barrier-free accessible, it, it locks into place so that wheelchair, somebody with crutches, et cetera, um, can drive over it very easily, but it also allows the water to flow down through there. And we'll, we'll obviously have to put some under drains in there and, and just prove that, but the, you know, I'm not going to create a traditional erosion issue there.
I'm sure they're going to have you follow all kinds of whatever you have to do with the river.
Move, we adopt a resolution 2013 dasher six.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagura?
Hi.
Tyler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Move, we adjourn the first session.
Walagura?
Hi.
Tyler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
No, no, that's-